I do have one by leave today. This is the by leave that was referred to earlier. This is related to the property tax rebate for the calendar year 2023. Madam President, I gave a substantive presentation on this back in early November. I'm happy just to provide a few comments just to tee this up. I don't plan on going through a formal presentation. But just for folks who are watching at home and for in the interest of transparency, annually, the county provides a property tax rebate, or what we call if people are listening at home and they hear the words PTR, it's Property Tax Rebate, to residential homeowners in the county. The rebate is funded from the proceeds of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. This is relates to the sales tax, the one-half cent sales tax that was approved by voters back in 1996, which paid for the two stadiums on the riverfront. It currently pays for debt service associated with those stadiums, pays for capital and operating expenses at both stadiums, also pays for pilot payments associated with the construction and the capital program of the Cincinnati Public Schools. This fund, the fund was originally supposed to support, as we went through in our presentation roughly a month ago, a PTR of approximately of 30% of sales tax proceeds. But shortly after it was, it went into effect, we started to experience a slowdown in the growth of sales tax, which made that level of property tax rebate unsustainable. So each year, the administration provides a recommendation to the board on a PTR level for the subsequent year. There's never been, since we've gotten into this mode of there not being a way to sustainably afford a, a full PTR, there's never been a true policy on, on what that level should be. So the administration annually provides a recommendation, which is typically based in trying to keep that, that fund sustainable. So this year, as I indicated back earlier this, or I guess early last month, the administration's recommendation is to provide a PTR of 10.5%, which is equal to approximately $32.39 on the value of $100,000 home. The recommendation was designed to make sure that we continue some level of property tax rebate, to support a fund balance in the sales tax fund, equivalent to roughly 85% of the maximum annual debt service in the fund, and to start to structure some sort of policy around the rebate. Recognizing that, as I indicated, the fund balance, or the fund balance in that fund is really the sole firewall between the legal obligations in that fund and the county's general fund, and the value of the assets on the riverfront that this fund serves. In the end, though, absent a defined policy, this ultimately comes down to risk tolerance on the, the level of fund balance that we retain in the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. As I reported out at, in the meeting where we previously discussed this, I've experienced when, when in my early years here in the administration, a time when that fund essentially was reaching the point of insolvency. So the recommendation I'm providing, I have provided you is one designed to ensure that we don't hit that point again, that the fund remains solvent, viable well into the future, that it retains a balance capable of supporting policy flexibility into the future, recognizing many of the capital investments that we have coming on both stadiums in the, in subsequent years, and provides the board with the flexibility it needs to resolve those commitments. So, Madam President, happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to keep the, the presentation short, since we did go through a rather substantive presentation on this roughly a month ago.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam Presi-
Yeah, I do have a question.
Just one quick note. I referenced the by leave, I didn't reference the actual by leave in front of you. So you do have in front of you, the administration's recommended by leave, which is in front of you as resolution number 30. I do want to advise that there are two resolutions, because when we were putting this together, we weren't quite sure where the board would be. We wanted to provide flexibility. So there is a, there are two resolution number 30s. One relating to the administration's recommendation of 10.5% or 9.625. There's also a resolution in front of you that, that prescribes a full property tax rebate amount. So I just wanted to make sure that as we move forward, there's clarification on which resolution number 30 we would be adopting. So, sorry for that.
Madam President, before we get started on that, before I get to our points, because I know we had a brief recess, and I didn't get the chance to talk to the lawyer as well. But I don't know how we got two resolutions, number 30, when the, I understand the rules and I thought how we operate, it goes to the clerk. And my resolution number 30 with the full 30% has been sitting on the calendar for some time. So I don't know how, by leave number one, could we could have two number 30s? That's confusing to me, and I think it's, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I, I hope it's not what I'm thinking. But by leave number 30, resolution number 30 that's been on the calendar out to the taxpayers, public record for this meeting, has the resolution that, that I introduced at 30%. So I'm trying to understand how we came up with two 30s, that this one just arrived minutes before we came into the meeting to vote. So shouldn't this be a different number? Shouldn't it be two by leaves? My by leave was already on the calendar for some time.
Madam President, so I'm not sure how the board wants to take the numbering. The, the 10.5%, 9.625 million arrived as I requested this be placed on the agenda to provide the board with the flexibility to enact either the 30% or the administration's recommendation. So whether you want to renumber one is-
Yeah, well, we, we definitely want to vote on the 30. I hope we're not trying to tiptoe around this 30 that's been on the calendar for some time. I mean, I did what I was supposed to do. We put it on the calendar to the clerk, and then this came parading in and minutes before the, the meeting. So I'm just a little, I mean, I would hope we wouldn't do that. I would hope we would, if you're not for the 30, we would, I want to vote on it. Let's don't sneak around and put two 30s up here. I did what we were told to do, this was the number we had. It's been sitting on the calendar for everyone to see it. And I would hope that, you know, it's one thing if you vote it down, it's another thing if it looks like, you know, trying to, I don't know if it's, you know, making my office look like we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. I just want to make sure that, because they worked really hard and had the meetings and those kind of things, and I think this deserves to be vetted up or down. That's, that's, that's my understanding.
I was just going to note that our numbering system is such that we knew that the PTR resolution was going to be resolution number 30. The content of that resolution could be different depending on which version of it. So we didn't choose a new number when we drafted other versions of it. I've got seven or eight versions of this on my computer, or they're all resolution number 30.
I got you, but I'm saying, we put it on the count, the clerk, because I, I just did what we were supposed to do. It's on the thing, 30 has been taken, it's like the football team. Once one person has 30 on their jersey, we can't have two 30s on the thing, somebody got to go get 31. But I want this to be voted on, I don't want to be going down on a technicality.
And it will be voted on, and so we often have options, even though it's a resolution, we have options of which way we want to go. To make it resolution 31 would not make it the PTR. It would, I mean, 30 and 31. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Madam President, as Assistant Administrator Brugan indicated, the PTR resolution was slated as, as number 30. Nothing here prevents any of these from being introduced and voted on.
So you look at both options and you either vote it up or down, yeah.
Right, and there, there, at the end of the day, there will not be two resolution number 30s that pass.
No, I understand that, Madam President. I just said on this calendar, usually last year, we did a couple different by leave one, two, three. On here, it's only one by leave, and the by leave that we asked to have was this 30%. So I would have thought it would have said a by leave number two would be this other by leave, but it didn't do that, and I just want to make sure, because I know my office did what they were told to do, and follow the rules, that we don't come back and we got a technicality.
So, so it is still on the agenda with the 30%, resolution number 30, and then also resolution 30 for the 10.5%. So yours is still on the agenda, it's just an additional one that deals with the PTR.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure, because there's only one by leave on here, so don't we need two by leaves?
It's the same, well, same subject, PTR, with different options.
Yes.
The clerk's office got it late, and we would be adding it after the meeting. We would, and it would be by leave two.
Not my by leave, you got mine also.
Your by leave is by leave one, and it will stay as by leave one, but the other one will come in, it will be added after the meeting as by leave two.
Okay.
We, we got it too late to get it out, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Nope.
I mean, not for you, but just in general, it's a technicality, so that kind of explains some of it too. So, did you have additional comments as it relates to resolution number 30?
Yes, so, resolution that, that I have on here is by leave one, calls for the full 30%. And I'll tell you why. I know every time the administration continues to recommend a very low number, and, and, you know, they have that right. However, each year, we have to vote on this, so there's no voting on a 10-year plan. Every year, you look at how much money you have, and you decide if you can do it. And based on this year, and what we have in the bank, we can do it. Now, what they're going to tell you is that, oh, well, we can't do it for 10, five more years. That's, we don't even know what's going to happen in five more years, but thank God, the law says you have to vote every single year. So we've got to look at this year, what we got in the bank, and what we can afford. And it's hard for me, in a minute, we're going to have MSD come up, and they're going to talk about a rate increase. We got to look at what's really happening out here. We just passed a levy, and that's an increase. Mental health is an increase, so you're going to, your next bill, your bill will go up. Now, on the taxpayer side, we can't keep saying, we got to keep going up on all your stuff, but then over here, we cannot give you a break. We can't do it. And then we come back and say the argument, and, and I, I agree with Mr. Malu on a lot of things, but on this one, we disagree. And I know the administration, you put numbers and you put the numbers based on the case you want to present. But the reality is, we got the money to do it, we will not go insolvent. I asked them, if we did 30% this year, would we be insolvent? He said, no. They talking about, well, if you keep doing it five, 10 years, I don't know what's going to happen in five, 10 years. Inflation is up, that means when you buy bread, it costs more, that means from a tax, sales tax, we're getting more. And so my difference here is that I'm for giving the people a break. Your tax bill will be due in January, the hardest month coming. The economy is shaky. Now, maybe next year, the economy go great, and we can look at some other things. Now, I did what I was asked to do. Last year, I asked for a tax holiday just like Warren County. I was told, Reese, you got here too late. I was new, trying to understand it. But now I ain't late. I asked for a tax holiday, and the response is, well, we're going to examine it next year, where your tax bill is due in January. I just came from emergency dental, that's why my, it's hard for me to talk, but the lady that was there, assistant at the dentist, she even said, oh my God, Commissioner Reese, I sure hope y'all do that 30%. Maybe that'll get people, you know, really not leaving Hamilton County, because it's just so expensive. This is at the dentist, you know I ain't going to argue with the dentist. This is at the dentist. This is something real. Now, the taxpayers were lied to. They went to the polls, voted for stadium, and at the end of that, we got more than stadiums. Every time you look up, we got garages going up, we got development on the banks and all that stuff. $8 million for Wi-Fi at Paul Brown Stadium, and the taxpayers are on the hook to pay it. Eight million. Whether you go in there or not, you on the hook for $8 million. And the excuse is, well, it's in their contract. We promised them. Now, the people got screwed by the county. We weren't here, but they got screwed by the county, because the county didn't put the people in the contract. They were promised with false advertisement. False advertisement. Told that they, if you vote for this, you'll get 30% rebate, and every time we come up, we got an excuse. Now, last year, we was able to get it going for the first time in years and years. But we got the money to do it. But instead, we'd rather hold the money, and then in a few minutes, you'll hear from MSD saying, we got to go up on rates. And I'm, right now, the only person so far that came publicly, say, I don't want the rate to go up at all. Then you'll hear from 3CDC will be down here, we got to build a $500 million hotel, we got to do a convention district, 500 and 200, 700 million. And they'll tell you, oh, that's another pile of money, and we're- This money was not a restricted fund. When you voted on this, you voted on sales tax, which goes to the general fund. This was not a restricted fund. We chose to make it restrictive, because we got this contract with the Bengals that's got us handcuffed, so we chose to make it restrictive. But this ain't restrictive, this is general fund money. And we're choosing not to give the taxpayers a break. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford the sports teams. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford the big hotels. We can't afford the taxpayers, but we can afford to give the guy a Millennium Hotel, and the Port Authority, give them $5 billion, and we get nothing out of it. We over there with green space, just looking around. We can afford all these things, but we can't afford the homeowner? Now, we went up for mental health, because we said we need more money for mental health. But my God, can't we get them a break on the backside? We got a children's health levy that we merged, $100 million sitting around. I asked, well, can't we do something? Well, we got to study that. Well, the treasurer wants to be paid in January, she don't have time for a study. You got to pay your taxes in January. So my whole point is, it's something that we look at every year. There's nothing that we can vote on that's going to bind us for the rest. And I think the people can understand it better if we really were, if we really didn't have the money. But we have the money. The money is there. And people are on a right-now program. Right now, they got to pay their mortgage. Right now, they got to pay their gas and electric. Right now, they got to pay their water bill. January, they want right now that you pay your taxes. So we got to look at, how do we help people right now? And so for me, the day that we had that conversation with the property tax rollback, it was just, I was like, it's the tales of two different counties. On one hand, we had them come and get these pretty pictures, and we need a convention district, and, oh man, we got to do it, and we can do it, we gonna make it happen? And then we come back, and we say, oh my God, the Port Authority got sued, they lost in court twice. The court didn't say we had to pay at all, we was, they didn't call our names, but we went into the general fund and gave them $5 million for their mistake? And we got none but green space, that's one group. And then we get on this side and say, well, looking at the projections, doesn't look like we're able to give 30% to the homeowner, it just won't be fiscally able to do it. We got to have, we can't have two rules. Big business, we can do it. Homeowner, we can't help you. So, I know that I may not have the votes. I had them last time, I appreciate it, it was tough, you did last time. But COVID economic effects did not go away. Inflation and everything else is hitting the people. And I'm just at a point where I just want to give the people a break. But I can go a step further. Why is the promise to the people subjective? But you say, we can't do it, because we got a Bengal Stadium coming, we got to give, we gonna have to give them half a billion dollars to a billion dollars. That was, Mr. Ludo just said that, if we do that, we won't be able to do all these bells and whistles for the Bengals. If we do that, we won't be able to pay that $8 million, so they can have Wi-Fi for a few games. If we do that, we won't be able to have our obligations to the Reds that unfortunately lost 100 games this year. Even the Reds downsized, because they said, wait a minute, we can't afford it, we're going to downsize the players. They got a break. All I'm asking is that the homeowners get a break. And some of these other things, I mean, I want to try to work with them, but I think we send the wrong message. We say we're for affordable housing, that doesn't mean people who don't have a house, we trying to help people to keep the house they got. And if the taxes keep going up, it's going to become unaffordable. And half of these people that come to us, that want us to invest in these big deals and go up on the taxes, I looked at their zip codes, they don't even live in Hamilton County. One of them told me, oh, I don't live in Hamilton County, I live in Warren County, because the taxes are low. But by the way, I need you to build this, build that, I've got great ideas, Hamilton County, you got to do it. I said, wait a minute, hold it. Why do we got to do all this, and you, you moved to Warren County? Because you said the taxes were lower. So I'm trying to even this playing field to make Hamilton County affordable. President Dumas is right, the little guy, she's right. And senior citizens that have come forward, they can't hold on to their house. So that's why I think the 30%, we have the money, it's not fiscally irresponsible. Don't tell me about 25, 2025 and 2024, because the law does not allow us to vote on 24 or 25, or 26. It only allows us to set the rate for 23. And we have the money to do it without us going insolvent, without us being fiscally irresponsible. And I believe that when 2024 get here, then we'll have that conversation. But 2023, the property tax will be due in January, and people need help now. So I wanted to say that, I know next year, 23, we'll be talking about the Bengals, and what do we want the thing to look like, and we'll be talking about the bells and whistles, and do we want the concession stands, and do we want the screens, do we want all those things? And they'll say, we got to do it, because we have a contract. I'm asking us to keep the contract with the homeowners, who were told they would get 30%. So that's why I asked for this by leave. I would like to have a vote on it to go up or down, but I think at least it needs to have that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, did you want to make a comment?
Just a, a point of clarification procedurally, if you'd like, Madam Commissioner, or Madam President. So any commissioner can bring forward a resolution to be voted upon. If that is, if that motion dies for lack of a second, then that resolution will not be voted on this day, this meeting. So a motion can be brought for a resolution, be specific which resolution, but if that motion dies for lack of a second, then a vote will not be taken on that item this day.
Can I ask some point of clarification? If it doesn't get a second, it's on the, I want to have acknowledgement that it is on the calendar as by leave number one.
I believe the, the clerk has addressed that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so if it doesn't, for lack of a second, that where does it go? Do it stay on the calendar? We've had that before.
It'll, it'll be in the record.
It'll be in the record, that's what I want to make sure.
It will stay in the record, and it will say for lack of a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yeah, before I provide my comments, I want to ask a question of the Budget Director, John. Because I know there was a meeting this morning, and we're always getting updated information related to all things, including the PTR. So, Mr. Brugan, you talked about some projections in the sales tax, you know, going into the future, and before I comment, I just want to have a better understanding of what the projections are related to sales tax. I know we're in a, in uncertain economy with inflation and other things, and so I just was hoping that you could provide that information for us.
Just broadly about where we think sales tax is going? I'm sorry.
Well, specifically related to this fund.
Specifically related to this fund. And really, the answer is, we don't know. We have projected a minus 5% in sales tax next year, because, you know, we keep hearing talk about a recession, and we don't know what sales tax is going to look like in a recessionary environment. The last recession, we saw a year of minus 9%. So we're at minus 5 at this point, and the future will be what it is.
Right, and I, and I knew you can provide a, a certain answer, but projections are important as we talk about the PTR. Thank you. So, yeah, and I just want to set this conversation and provide some clarity. We're talking about, we're not talking about not providing the PTR. We're talking about how much is going to be provided through the PTR. So we're talking about two different options. One is the administrator's recommendation of 10.5. The other option is the 30%. So I just want to be clear, doing nothing is not in front of us. That is not what's on the table. What's on the table is how much of a PTR we're going to be providing for the taxpayers. So, and to provide a little bit of context here, I always find myself providing context, but I feel like that's my role. Sometimes we used to have Todd Fortun playing this role, but I'm playing it today. I just want to roll back for a minute. You know, when I first got to the county, we were in difficult financial straits. We were cutting positions, we were doing none of the economic development stuff that we're doing now, we were reducing services, we were in a bit of a crisis mood. And so we had a lot of tough decisions to make. I was on the board at the time when we were making those tough decisions, and we are in a very different place right now in Hamilton County. We've got a stable budget, and we've got a budget that also represents opportunity for us to partner with the 49 jurisdictions in this county in a real way. And I think we, and we've all said it, we're very proud of the work that we're doing. And so at this moment in time, you know, we've got a stable budget, we're providing competitive wages for our employees, we are doing community redevelopment grants, we're doing the Community Impact Grant, which we just talked about. We're responding to citizens' needs, because we have the capacity to do it, the 513 Relief Program is part of that. We have a bond rating of double A3, which is very good, and something else that we should be very proud of. And we have the ability to advance some of our capital projects through our general fund. This is something we could not have done six or seven years ago. So I just want to create a frame that talks about where we are as a county, when we then start to talk about some of these restricted funds, the stadium fund being one of them. And so we're talking about the fund, the stadium fund, and what that fund is obligated to do, which really is at the crux of what we were talking about here. So this fund has to pay for the debt associated with the stadiums and the development on the riverfront. It has to pay for football stadium operations, it has to pay for baseball stadium operations, and it has to pay for the Cincinnati Public Schools pilot payment. Those are the straight-out obligations of this fund. And the total of all of that is around 80 to 85 million annually. So that's, that's just right off the top, we have to do this stuff. The debt is about 50 million, so you peel out some of the operations dollars, and now we're down to $50 million that we, that is related to the debt we owe on the stadiums and the development at the riverfront. We have been told by the administrator and by the Budget Director that experts in finance and in economics have been telling us that about an 85% of what we owe, so 85% of the 50, is about what you should have on hand as a reserve. It's like if you own a house. You've got money in reserve, in case the furnace breaks, or you get a leak in the roof, or you need, you have an appliance breakdown, you have a reserve. This is the, the way you budget, this is the way you, you approach things. You don't spend down your reserve, because if something were to happen, then you're really, you've got a problem. And related to the obligations of this fund, we have debt service that we have to pay. It has to be paid. And so if it cannot be paid through this fund, because we've spent down the reserve, then we have to dip into the general fund. The general fund is what's funding all of these other things that I just talked about, that we, we all are very proud of and rightfully proud of. So the challenge here is the balance, right? How much is enough to keep into the reserve, to have a reasonable rate of reserve, and then how much is left to do the PTR? And from my frame, that's where I sit. I am very worried about two things. One is having the reserve dip so low that our rating changes, and it's more expensive for the county to borrow money, which is not where I don't think any of us want us to be. And the other one is just dipping into the general fund to the point where we're not able to do some of the things, competitive wages, community redevelopment, that the general fund supports. So these are the things that I have contemplated in trying to figure out for my own benefit where I am on the PTR, because as Commissioner Reese- Because as Commissioner Reese says, we do this every year. We talk about the PTR every year. And we have to figure out where we are at this moment in time. But I want to say that I've asked Mr. Brugan for the runs, as I always do. And, you know, I'm very concerned about doing something at a rate of 30% because the reserve fund then dips well below this 85% that I just talked about. And I don't think that that is a good way to budget. And so I'm not in favor of doing that. What I am in favor of is doing something that keeps that reserve at an amount that's around the 85%. That's been recommended by the financial experts. So we don't know what the future holds, as Mr. Brugan just said. You know, we are facing potentially a recession here in the near future. We don't know. We'll have an opportunity next year to talk about this again. The 10.5 recommendation, I think, recognizes that we want to keep the reserve, but we also want to do something to pay into the PTR as we do every year. So from my vantage point, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. We have to look at projections. We have to look at the current economy. We have to make a decision about what is the risk of having a reserve that is lower than what's been recommended by the financial experts. And from my vantage point, we've worked really hard to, not only related to the general fund, to all the things that we're so proud of that we're doing as a county, but we've worked really hard to maintain these restricted funds as well, whether it's the parking fund, the TOT, this fund. We've worked really hard to create these balances because we don't know what's coming, and we don't know what the future holds. And so I think the reasonable PTR is the 10.5, and I am planning to support that at today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I have yet to make any comments. Just a few comments. When I came in 2019, we were in a $29 million deficit. We, as was said earlier, we have a structurally balanced budget now. I don't want to go back to that. As I looked at the numbers that Jeff and John had given me, it concerned me. The 30% PTR efforts, I think, were honorable for the people, for the Commission who did it at that time. But as Jeff said, there was really no way to know if we could afford this amount and maintain a reasonable reserve. As a Commissioner, I have the responsibility to look at the financial landscape and forecast for any emergencies that may come forth to us. I do not want to go into the reserve if we don't have to. And as was said earlier, if you have the money, it doesn't mean you spend the money. We definitely want to do a PTR, and there will be a vote here today. And I think people know that we've done all that we can do to provide some relief to the people during this almost post-pandemic time. But I have to think about what's best for the county and what other areas do we want to be able to maintain, excuse me, some reserves to do all the great things that we're doing. And so because of that, it makes sense to me. We have to make a decision by December 1st and let the auditor know, and we will do that today. But it makes financial sense to me to give the PTR, but not at the 30% level. So at this time...
Madam President. Yeah, I don't want to rush through this. I know we trying to get to something else, but...
No, we're still dealing with this.
I just wanted to highlight some things because it's almost like it was presented as though Commissioner Reese just pie out of the sky because we can do something, doesn't mean we should do something. I want to say that I had some economic people look at these numbers as well. This is not a pie out of the sky. In fact, at one point, the auditor even had said, why aren't we doing the 30% we committed? And that's the auditor, since we want to talk about what the auditor has to say. But I do think that our messaging is kind of double-sided. We're saying here that we want to do what's best. We want to keep our bond rating. And bond rating is affected also by borrowing capacity. And those who are in the economic world, or the business world, or small business world, the reality is, if we're saying what has been said today, then we wouldn't even be considering, we wouldn't even be considering talking about the new stadium. We wouldn't even be talking about a new stadium or fixing up any stadium because of our debt capacity if we're talking about just this fund. If we're talking about just this fund, we wouldn't even be thinking about talking about these larger things like a convention district if we're saying we're going to be conservative about our bond rating and the fund. We can't build our rating, A-plus rating, off the backs of the taxpayers while we walk around and give the big businesses all of these government-funded major things. So either we're having a convention district or we're not because we can't afford it. Either we're going to do a brand-new, upgraded stadium or we're not because we can't afford it. Because that's what it seems we're saying today. We're saying that we're in dire need. Now, I want to clarify something so we'll be very, people can understand. When you say restricted fund, restricted funds are usually done by the Ohio Revised Code. And our engineer is here, and he has restricted funds, and the Ohio Revised Code is the people that are restricted. This is not a restricted fund. I asked Mr. Aludo. This is really just general fund money. We just, before us, some people came and said, we're going to only use this money so that we can keep the commitments to the Bengals. The same folks that put naming rights that we can't even get a return phone call. We want to keep our commitment to them. We're not, we're not talking about bond rating when we go down there and do all these parking garages and do debt. We didn't say nothing about bond rating when you went out and bonded the Millennium Hotel down, and it's still sitting there with nothing on it, making zero dollars. We didn't say anything about bond rating when the Port Authority was recommended by the Administrator that we pay the Port Authority for something they messed up that was $5 million out of the general fund. No one got up and said, let's look at the table. Let's look at, can we fiscally afford to pay for something that the court said we didn't even have to pay for? No one said, they said, we got to do it, so let's do it. So I just want to be clear, fiscally, we can do this. Fiscally, the fund will, this fund that ain't even a restricted fund, but we self-restricted it, this fund would not be insolvent because we're going to go straight to borrowing again on stadiums that we ain't even paid for yet. All I'm saying is, let's have, I think the people don't understand because the ones I'm running into, so they can't understand why their property taxes are going up. They can't understand it. My beautician says she can't understand. She told me. Why am I, why is my rate, why is my, I'm trying to hold on to my house in Forest Park. Why, why am I going up? Now, we went and went with mental health, and the voters voted for it, but we put it on there. They're going to get a little uptick now. I'm trying to find a way to, on the back end, to reduce it. They're not going to understand that we got $100 million in levy money just sitting there ain't being used, which could be rebated back to the taxpayers. So I just want to make sure, however we vote, I just want the facts out there that I'm not no willy-nilly, just jump out the bed, we can do it, so let's do it. No, number one, you made a promise to the taxpayers. That's number one. And the question is, why do you keep your commitment to the Bengals but can't make your commitment to the taxpayers? Why do you keep your commitment to the Reds? But then, when it comes to the taxpayers, you can't keep the commitment. So I'm trying to have one set of rules. And then, number two, we got the money. The money is here, and it will not hurt this fund if we went this year. And number three, we vote on it each year, each year, based on what the financial projections are. So wanted to highlight that. This is not a restricted fund by the Ohio Revised Code. We self-restricted. This money was not to be doing some other stuff that we've done with this money down at the riverfront. It was for the stadiums. We doing more than that. And number three, if we can keep our commitment to them, why can't we keep our commitment to the taxpayers? So those were the points, how I got to the 30% that we'd be allowed to do it, would not make us insolvent. I've seen nothing to say our credit rates are going to go down. MSD is going to come in a minute and say, you got to go up on the rates because our credit rating got to go down. Why does it have to be on the backs of the poor homeowners who are just trying to hold on? So with that, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Let me also clarify my comments. There is definitely a negative impact on this fund if we do 30% rollback. Definitely a negative impact. Because what we've been told is that 85% of what we need to keep in here is about 43 million. And if we do a 30%, we dip down to 28 million next year. So we are down below the recommended amount. If we go at the 10.5, we're about 45 million, so we're just over the 43. So there is a clear impact here. And when we talk about the bond ratings, the bond ratings matter because the taxpayers are paying for the increased cost of borrow. It's, the county's paying it, but the taxpayers are paying it because they pay taxes into the county. So there's definitely a negative impact. If our bond rating suffers because we have dipped below the reserve amount that's been recommended, you, we, there's a risk there, and that's a risk I'm not willing to take. So we just have different, I think we have different opinions about the impact of doing these, these different things. And I also want to just be clear, because I think that maybe if people were listening, they hear the 10.5, they hear the 30, they, what does this really mean? What are we talking about here? So the difference between doing a 30% and the 10.5, which has been recommended by the Administrator, is about $60 a year, so it's about five bucks a month. That's what we're talking about. That's the difference that we're talking about. So we, the 10.5 has us doing something, just not as much as the full PTR. And lastly, unfortunately, we are tied by a contract that was entered into many years ago, and we've talked multiple times about how everyone in this county dislikes the lease. We've talked about it multiple times. And we are tied to that lease until it's renegotiated. And I'm looking forward to the renegotiation myself to do a better job at preserving the taxpayer resources. But at this moment in time, we don't have that luxury. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the question. Vice President Reese, I'll provide the courtesy for you to present your resolution first, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. I like to, I would like to enter by leave number one, Resolution Number 30. Now, therefore, be resolved the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that 30% of the proceeds, averaging $27,474,000 of the proceeds from the dedicated one-time 1% sales tax be used for property tax reductions for the homeowners for 2022 payable in the calendar year of 2023.
Is there a second? Hearing none, that, that motion dies. I'd like to make a motion from the, from the floor to adopt Resolution Number 30, authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year 2023. The Administrator's Recommendation now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that $9,625,000, which is 10.5% of the proceeds from the dedicated 1/2% sales tax, is to be used for property tax reductions from the 2022 tax year payable in calendar year 2023.
Second.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we will move forward for our 115 public hearing.